Hello councillors. The first item of business is to confirm the appointment of councillor David Ellis as chairman for the council year 2018/19. Is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you.
Thank you for your confidence, members. Right, item two is the appointment of vice-chairman and are you agreed on the appointment of councillor Maurice Byham as vice-chairman for the central planning committee for the council year 2018 to 19?
Agreed.
Thank you. Minutes of the last meeting have been on the table here for the last 30 minutes. Are you happy for me to sign them as a true record of our last meeting?
Agreed.
Thank you. Any apologies for absence, Emma?
Yes, we have apologies from councillors Bob Upton, Maurice Byham, Anna James, Dennis Lee, Peter Martin and Stephen Reynolds.
Thank you. Any declarations of interest?
None prior to the meeting.
Oh, yes, there is.
Councillor Ellis has declared a pecuniary interest in item B2 on the Step Cottage and he will leave the room while the item is considered and we will do an election of chairman for that item when we come to it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the public?
None received.
There seems to be a lot of discussion going out there. Do we have a problem?
Sorry, the main question was, is there a sort of core room that has to be established for this meeting? Because it does seem slightly underpopulated.
It's a quarter of the total membership, so we are core.
Thank you, Paul. Right, relevant updates to government guidance. Steve, I believe you have some stuff to talk to us about.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. A forthcoming attraction for us. The start of June sees the rollout of a new initiative from the government which is called Permission in Principle. Elizabeth Sims and I will be issuing you with a briefing paper about what this is all about, but in summary, it's an alternative route to obtain planning permission which separates the consideration of matters of principle from the technical details associated with applications. The idea is that at the principle stage, you're just looking at land use and amount and location of development. It only relates to relatively small-scale developments, so minor schemes of up to nine dwellings, and there are new application procedures for that which impose some relatively challenging timescales. We'll be having to make decisions in five weeks on the matters of principle and if that's approved, that then gets followed up by a separate technical details matter. There will be more information coming out to you, so we'll get that out to you and if you have any questions at that stage, do let me know, but we thought it appropriate in case there is any discussion out in your areas about this, that you're aware that something is coming and it is a new initiative aimed at basically trying to drive up the ease with which smaller sites can come forward for housing delivery. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. That sounds very much like what we used to call outline planning permission. Or Rose by any other name. Right, while, yes, Steve, while you've got the, did somebody raise a hand? Councillor Bolton, would you like to ask a question?
Thank you, Chairman. Can I ask the officer, will we still be able to call in applications?
That's a very good question. We will be having to review the constitution and the scheme of delegation and reflect the new arrangements at this point in time. I did have a leaf through earlier on. It's not expressly referred to, although it is an application under the Town and Country Planning Act, so I think we might well be covered already, but it's a good point and I'll seek to clarify that in the update note I send you.
Thank you, Chairman. If I may come back, I noticed the first application this evening is for six dwellings, which is less than what the officer said of seven, so if we were not able to call it in, then we wouldn't be able to discuss the application.
I think the figure of nine was mentioned, actually, but your point is well made, yes, and you would hope for the sake of democracy that we would still be able to call things into committee to discuss them, wouldn't you? Right, yes, government targets, performance against government targets. Steve, back to you.
Yes, thank you, Chairman. This is the usual report in terms of just noting the position in terms of how your planning service has been performing in relation to the government targets on speed and quality laid out on page five of your agenda papers. You'll see there that we're maintaining excellent performance in terms of speed for both major and non-major categories of development. And in relation to the quality targets, again, as usual, they're comfortably below the threshold in respect of non-major proposals and in respect of majors, you'll see that there's an improving position there and that's really largely a reflection of the turnaround that we've seen with the adoption of the local plan. So it's encouraging signs and obviously we'll keep reporting to you and we'll see how matters emerge as the months go by. One point, we don't yet know what the next assessment period will be, so those best estimates are just keeping track of where we are and what the direction of travel is. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Councillor Holder.
Thank you, Chairman. Can I just inquire when this new regulation is going to start?
Through you, Chairman. Do you mean the next assessment period? When the government tell us? We're waiting to hear. The last assessment period, yep, was concluded in March and ran through to the end of last year in respect of appeals. We haven't been advised of the next assessment period. We wait and we watch.
Did you mean the government figures or were you referring to this new planning policy?
No, I was referring to the new planning policy.
That, I believe, is June, isn't it, you said? Yes, June of this year. Fairly soon, yes. Rapid learning curve coming up. Right, in event of site inspections being necessary as a result of our considerations this evening, these will be held on Monday the 18th of June 2018 at a time to be agreed at the meeting. So we move on to the main items for discussion this evening. Firstly, I should welcome the members in the public gallery. In the case of a fire, the directions are up there and we meet outside Waverley. There's no plans for any testing this evening, so if the alarm sounds, it's real and we get out as quickly as possible, although they have been having a bit of trouble with their alarms just recently, I understand. So moving on to item B1, which is Planning Reference WA 2017 Oblique 1750, the erection of six dwellings and alterations to existing Arms Houses at Wyatt's Arms Houses, Mead Row. And Marie Clark, hello Marie, I don't think we've had you at this committee meeting before, so welcome and you're going to introduce this.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is an application at Wyatt's Arms Houses. You can see on this location plan that it's accessed via Mead Row and it consists of eight vacant flats, which are here, and then there's two existing outbuildings to the rear. Surrounding the site, there are 32 bungalows which are on a long lease from the council. It's a Grade One listed building. This is a photograph showing the front elevation. And these photographs show the bungalows which surround the Arms Houses. Shows the interior of the chapel within the building, within the central element, there's a private chapel, so it's not for community use. And that's a photograph to show the interior of the Arms Houses. The rear elevation and the outbuildings to the rear. And this shows the access road and the relationship to the existing dwellings. These are the existing floor plans. As I mentioned, there are eight existing flats and the building has been quite substantially altered internally, particularly with regard to the installation of these staircases to access the flats at first floor level. And here in the centre is the chapel. These are the existing elevations. This is the proposed site plan. So it's proposed to refurbish the Grade One listed building and make some alterations to create six one-bedroom flats and one two-bedroom dwelling. Then to the rear, it's proposed to erect two terraces, so there'd be six one-bedroom dwellings in total and then parking at the rear for all the dwellings. These are the proposed elevations. Essentially, the works would be repair works to the existing building. And these are the proposed floor plans for the Arms Houses. So the main alteration would be to the chapel and the existing flat next to it to create this two-bedroom dwelling with a new internal staircase and link through. In terms of the six new dwellings at the rear, these are the proposed elevations. They would be relatively modest and they would be single-storey with a ridge height one metre lower than the existing Arms Houses building. And these are the floor plans for the new dwellings. And with regard to determining issues, matters of principle and technical opinion are flood risk, highways and parking, and impact on the Grade One listed building. Matters of judgment are the loss of the chapel, impact on visual amenity and impact on residential amenity. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Members. Councillor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is my ward and I think I note reasonably well, if I could put it that way. Christmas 2013. I, in fact, stayed in Godelming and tried to walk the ward in gun boots. I should have had waders because it was so deep. I managed to get as far as where Mead Row joins the Catterell Road. After that, it was not possible in gun boots to proceed down Mead Row due to the floods. All of us from Godelming know quite how bad those floods were. And what does really concern me is on page 23, it states, "It's possible that even if there was a small amount of flooding at the Arms Houses during 2013, 1968 or 1947, this is likely to be due to factors such as block, bridge blocking." That is simply misleading. In... I've taken from the Godelming Museum photos of what happened and it is headed the great flood of 1968 and it says the residents of Wyatt's Close were also evacuated. So that's 68. I've spoken to an old lady who used to live in the close. When she was a young child in the war years, it also flooded. She distinctly remembers that her grandmother had to come and, quotes, "rescue her." We turn to the last flood. It's all on the net. There's one particular interesting matter taken from Surrey News, December 2013. "Skips were today provided to help residents affected by flooding clear up deadburies and thrown out rubbish." A list of locations are below. And that includes in Godelming Wyatt's Close. There is and has been substantial flooding, probably once every 10, 12 years. I think that from the net, from the photographs, it is abundantly clear that the flooding was serious. I also note from the report that we are talking about a safe access out of Wyatt's. The only safe access, or the only access, is from Mead Row. And as I said earlier, I couldn't even get up there, it was so flooded. So I think one's got to take that into account. I was asked by the owners' experts whether the Godelming flood defence system, which has just been approved by our officers, would affect Wyatt's. Well, I've obviously written to the EA and obviously they have had no time to respond to that. My understanding as a member of the flood group, and I'm sure my co-member will confirm this, is that the whole point of the flood defence is not to cause any further problems either up or down of the river or of Hells Ditch. So I also sent in to the officers a letter from someone who lived in Wyatt's regarding the 2013 flood. He helped move people out, he helped carry people out, he helped the fire services to go round all the bungalows checking and getting people out. So to say it may have been a slight flood, it's completely and utterly wrong. So what I would prefer to happen, in view of the fact that there is a substantial difference of opinion over the floods, is that we should defer this, ask the EA who are dealing with the higher-up defence to come down and address this committee so that we are all absolutely clear about the flooding. I think that should be done on the safe side because we aren't going to deal with this particular property, which is the second oldest property in Godelming, which is still used again, and we have got to take that extra step to make absolutely certain that we get it right. On the question of chapel, we have been in touch with the Church of England, obviously, and as at today, unless anything's happened very recently, we must assume that it remains a place of worship. And then we would have to go or it would have to be gone through certain matters with the church authorities. I appreciate that takes time. One other thing I would ask all of us to take into account is at the site visit, which I must say I thought went extremely well and I'd like to thank the officers for arranging that site visit. We were told that it would take a very long time to remove asbestos and that there was a certain amount of asbestos. In fact, I think the statement was, the whole building is riddled with asbestos and that is going to take an extremely long time to deal with. So if we do have a relatively short deferment, I don't think that is going to make any long-term difference if it is correct that there is asbestos there and it's going to take a very long time to clear up. So I would ask, and I think I do have a seconda, that we do defer this. I'm not saying for a long time, but enough time to get another expert in as there is a substantial difference of opinion over the amount of flooding. Thank you.
Thank you, officers. Would you like to respond to those comments?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Whilst concerns regarding flooding are duly noted and certainly the access to the site has flooded in the past, I would advise that deferring the application wouldn't necessarily achieve anything in the Environment Agency may not want to attend a meeting. They declined to comment on the independent flooding assessment that was carried out and the comments of the council's consultant as well. With regard to the chapel being a place of worship, it's a private chapel, therefore it's not considered that it would be loss of a community facility in that respect. And with the asbestos, again, it's noted that that could take some time, but officers would advise that to defer due to the flooding issue may not actually achieve anything. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councillor Williams, did you wish to make a proposal with regards to a deferral?
I would. Could I come back on one matter? I had been in touch, as I was asked to be in touch with the EA, and I don't know which part of the EA our officers went to, but the person in charge of our new defence was not aware and the papers had not crossed his desk, so it may be another section of the EA. And certainly recently, members of the EA have been walking up and down Hells Ditch virtually every week, so we could certainly get someone down to advise us. So I would formally ask that this is deferred to enable the question of the amount of flooding to be resolved correctly.
Thank you. Do we have a seconda?
Thank you, Chairman. I'm happy to second that proposal.
Do you wish to speak to the proposal?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I would like to speak. I'm a member of the Church of England. I understand that once the chapel has been consecrated by the Church of England, the established church of the country, and members of the public are entitled to attend all services, I would dispute the saying that it is for private use, it is for public use. The fact that members of the public may not use it on a regular basis is irrelevant. It is a public consecrated church and it has not, as far as we understand, been de-consecrated. Thank you, Chair.
We were told during the site meeting, actually, that a chapel or a church cannot be de-consecrated. What they can do is they take away the legal obligations of the consecration, but once a building is consecrated, it is consecrated for all time. That's what we were told at the site meeting. Okay, councillor Follows.
Although in principle I actually do support the deferment because I think actually if there are things to consider about the flooding, that we probably should do that. But actually, just reading through the application again, what are we going to get out of a deferment? And we won't learn any more information, it sounds like, than what we've got. It's unlikely that we're going to get a comment from the Environmental Agency. And also, looking at the conditions again, there are some mitigations to the flood risks that are required. So as much as I agree that if the deferral resulted in us learning more information that could materially impact our judgement, I would agree with it completely, but I don't think, and officers please correct me if I'm wrong, that we will get any different, any more information to make a different judgement when this comes back. Thank you.
Yes, please, and I would reserve my right to speak later separately, aside from this proposal. I wonder if we could get some steer from officers on a couple of points. One, if this application were to be deferred, are we in danger of an appeal against non-determination? And is that likely to result in cost against us? Because ultimately, that is a material consideration for whether we should defer something or not. And secondly, given that this deferment is around the flood risk and the flood risk is a technical opinion as opposed to a matter of judgement, does that also put us in a difficult position? Because if this is a technical opinion from a technical statutory body, that they have said that essentially the Environment Agency are content with this, either by virtue of no objection or a standing advisory notice, I'm not sure we would guess anything, as councillor Follows has said, we would get anything from deferment. I appreciate what people, the concerns that people have, but we have to rely on our technical consultees. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to talk to this, speak to this proposal before I refer to the officers? No, okay, officers, would you like to comment, please?
Thank you, Chair. With regard to councillor Martin's comments there, you're correct in that the applicant could appeal against non-determination and the council could be liable to costs in that, as you stated, there are conditions which would adequately address the flooding issues. Therefore, it is considered that there will be no real reason to refuse the application and flood risk is a technical opinion and we have got experts that have told us that it can be mitigated against. So it would be unreasonable to refuse.
Thank you. So if we move to the proposal, the proposal is that this application be deferred pending further information from the Environment Agency. Can I have all those in favour of that proposal, please?
One, two, three, four.
And those against?
One, two, three, four. Seven, eight, so it's eight, so it's Chairman's.
Well, as I voted against it, then I will stick by that decision. So if we continue, would anybody else wish to speak? I think councillor Martin, you wish to speak to the recommendation.
I did. Thank you, Chairman. I think much of what this application is, is the improvements to the internal layout of a listed building. And as far as I can make out from the plans and from our report, there is very little change to the external facade of the building. And I'm, having had the property portfolio and seen these buildings firsthand as a result of that, I know how, how do I put it politely, dilapidated the inside of this building really is. I don't think it's reasonable that it could be maintained in its current form for any sort of dwelling use. It has to be improved. So I'm really quite comfortable with that. I appreciate the separating the loss of the chapel from a religious point and non-religious. from a religious point and non-religious. I don't believe that whether it's consecrated or not and the ins and outs of that is ultimately a planning decision. I'm assuming that there is either other regulations elsewhere in the same ways you have covenants on land which are not applicable to planning or land ownership which is not applicable to planning that would deal with that separately if it was necessary. The loss of the chapel purely from a building perspective or even a use aspect, again, it is not a used chapel. I don't recall it being used, I have been in it only when the carpenters' company were using it really as a small place to meet once a year. So I'm comfortable with that. Then you come to the new two blocks of, two small blocks of terraces. If we look at the matters of judgment, you're looking at the visual amenity and the residential amenity. The visual amenity of those properties, I don't think they would be visible at all from Mead Row, as far as I can make out. They're lower than the current almshouses and they are behind the Grade One listed property. So I don't think you would see them, the only place that you would likely see them would be from the inside of Wyat's close itself. So again, I have very little difficulty with the visual amenity. I think they are set aside, they're on the other side of the road from the small bungalows, they're at the back. I don't think there is any significant residential amenity issue on the local people. So as a result of all of that, I am content with the officers' report and their recommendation in it. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Wheatley.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. I found that site visit extremely interesting. Like councillor Tom Martin, I too have been in the chapel on the occasion of the carpenters' annual visit. And one could see it is, while still set up as a chapel, they just use it as a meeting room. I think personally that if a place is consecrated, it can't be any bad thing to live in somewhere that's actually blessed. So that wouldn't bother me at all. What would, I can understand the fear of flooding but if one takes every possible precaution with the conditions... And what worries me is this Grade One listed building is liable to crumble before our eyes. And unless somebody actually takes the whole challenge by the horns and gets in there, I think we would have a completely different problem to deal with. And looking at it, my goodness me, the carpenters have stopped using it, as far as I understand. First because they didn't have many residents and secondly, to bring it up to any kind of standard would cost an absolute fortune. And now we know there's all this asbestos everywhere, all that's got to be dealt with anyway. I can understand my colleagues' fears but I'm with the officers on this one.
Thank you. councillor Follows.
Thank you Chair, I completely agree with councillors Wheatley and Martin. The benefits in terms of the restoration of the Grade One listed building, I think with something like half a million pounds being invested to renovate it, I can't see that coming from any other source if not attached to a development opportunity. So I think that's really fantastic. You're also encapsulating or dealing with the asbestos is something you're going to have to do anyway, so we need to do that. I think the risk, the flood risk mitigation that's stated in the report, if the technical advice is that that is suitable, I don't believe any of the rest of us are qualified to raise a judgment against that particular view and so I'm equally happy to support the officers in their determination on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Holder.
Thank you Chairman. I think to satisfy councillor Williams' concerns, I think condition nine on page thirty-one probably fulfills his requirements. So I would be happy to support the officer's recommendation.
Thank you. Are we happy to move, councillor Bolton?
Thank you Chairman. Just a question for the officers. This is clearly going to be an expensive development for a relatively small number of properties and each of the properties is only, new properties is only a one-bedroomed dwelling so there's obviously going to be a limited sale price for them. Are the officers happy with the financial costs and the viability of this proposal bearing in mind that there are in the conditions a suggestion that, a requirement that at least for the five, next five years, there will be an ongoing cost? So in summary, are the officers happy with the financial viability of this proposal?
Thank you Chair. In terms of this scheme, it's not something that officers would really need to look at. The viability isn't really a planning issue. If it wasn't viable for the applicant to go ahead with the development, then they wouldn't implement it but we wouldn't really ask for a viability assessment on that basis.
Okay. councillor Bolton, do you wish to come back?
May I come back? I'm somewhat puzzled because certainly when we were looking at a larger application down Cattersall Lane, we were very concerned about the financial viability of the development. And I'm surprised that officers are not concerned about the financial viability of this.
Chairman, through you. I mean, we obviously do take viability concerns into account where there is a scheme that's presented to us which isn't policy compliant in one regard or another. Usually that's the affordable housing sort of element and yeah, we're all very used to receiving reports where there is a viability statement accompanying an application to justify a non-policy compliant position. That doesn't apply in this particular case and what we're not required to do is require viability assessments to prove that a policy compliant development is acceptable. So that's why you haven't got it in here. I do acknowledge that there are some ongoing requirements, landscaping such as here but those aren't remarkable, those are very much par for the course in terms of planning decisions. So that's why viability assessment doesn't really form part of the determining issues in this particular application.
Members, may I move to the recommendation? Thank you. The recommendation is that subject to conditions one to nine and informatives one to five as recommended on page twenty-eight of your report, permission be granted. All those in favour please?
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
And those against? Abstention? One abstention. That recommendation is carried. Thank you and good night.
So councillor Els has a keen interest in item B two. So we need to, with the absence of councillor Byham, we need to appoint a chairman for the rest of the meeting. Have I got any nominations please? councillor Wheatley?
Bearing in mind he has the experience of being our town planning chairman, may I put forward councillor Andrew Bolton please?
Do I have a seconda? Do I have any other nominations? Andrew Bolton, would you please come up? Thank you.
Thank you members, this was not a set-up job. Item, item B two, proposal of extensions and carport. The case officer is Mr Alex Inglis. Would he like to speak to the proposal please?
Thank you Chairman. So Step Cottage is located on the north-western side of Shady Hanger in Godalming and measures naught point naught seven four hectares. The site features a detached bungalow with sloping front amenity space, a detached outbuilding and a garage. So these are the existing elevations. The existing outbuilding has a maximum height of two point seven five metres, width of four point eight metres and a depth of three point nine metres. So these are existing floor plans, showing both the outbuilding, the garage which is set at a lower elevation due to the sloping site and also the part of the dwelling. So this slide shows the proposed elevations. That's the pitched roof over the outbuilding. It would have a ridge height of four point one metres to the rear when taken from the base of the building and four point two five metres at the front. The sloping ground is because, explains the difference in what you can see there. The link section in between the dwelling and the proposed outbuilding would have ridge height of three point four five metres. So these are the elevations of the outbuilding from the side. This shows the dark black line, they're showing the adjacent sloping ground level. This slide shows the proposed floor plans. The existing annex is shown as dotted. Yeah, it's shown as dotted here, that's the existing outbuilding. The proposed carport, which is to be at the front of the site, would be two point three metres in height with a depth of five point nine five and a width of three point four metres. And this shows the proposed block plan with everything included. That's the proposed carport to the front of the site here and rearrangement of some of the steps and the access to the dwelling. Yeah, but the existing steps are all moved, slightly moved around at the front here. The existing driveway, which is up to here extended slightly to include the carport and the existing grass verge along the front. So these are some photos showing the front elevation as seen from the road. Location of the carport is to be just in here. And these show the rear of the site with the outbuilding extension would be involved cutting into the bank at the back here. And these are some further photos of the outbuilding that's to be extended and the link section will be going in between across here. So before we move to the determining issues, I'd draw your attention to the update sheets. We have an update from our tree and landscape officer. Officer's consulted with the tree and landscape officer who has highlighted that the mature beech tree to the rear of the site would require removal, which is shown on the plans but not on the application form I believe. And the extent of the excavations and the necessary development to build a suitable retaining wall to the rear of the proposed outbuilding would cause some root damage to the bounding trees and the vegetation. However, as none of these are of a size or form that's of significant value to warrant a constraint on the site development. And therefore the revised recommendation, subject to conditions, that permission be granted with the matters of principle and technical opinion of the impact on the trees and the impact on the SPA and the matters of judgment, being the design and impact on the vision amenity, the impact on residential amenity. Thank you Chairman.
Thank you. councillor Martin?
Thank you Chairman. Given the reason that this is before us is simply because of the Architects' Association with us all, I'm entirely content with the report and I would be happy to go straight to a vote unless anybody else has anything to say.
Is anyone else, councillor Nicholas Hunter?
Thank you Chairman. I noticed on page forty-two that it's recommended that the new window which is proposed in the south-west elevation should be glazed so as to not overlook neighbouring properties. I would like that made a condition of this application.
Thank you councillor. Can I ask officers to comment on that? Brief pause while they're checking.
Thank you Chairman. Yes, that could be attached by a condition. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you members. Well, the recommendation is, subject to conditions one and two and an additional condition, an informative one, together with the update sheet, that permission be granted.
And the additional condition.
Yes, the additional condition which officers... All those in favour? Thank you. Thank you members, there are no items to consider in exempt session so that concludes this evening's meeting. Thank you.